Good evening, everyone. This is Lori Charlton. It's April 5th, 2022, and I want to welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Board of Finance. I'll call the meeting to order and ask that we please rise while our colleague, Mr. DeWitt, leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
To the members of the public, if you've dialed in or joined us on WebEx tonight, please know that you are muted and will not be heard by board members, and there will be no live public comment until called for by the chair during the meeting. Members of the public are always encouraged to send their comments and questions in writing to the board at the following email, If you do so, please remember to include your name and address as you would with live comment. As part of tonight's agenda, we have two main items of business. The first, item three, is a voting item that was postponed from our March 31st meeting related to the WPCA. If any of the -- if any member of the public wishes to speak on that item, please enter your name in the chat box and indicate so, and you'll be recognized after the board deliberates that matter and before the vote. We ask that you limit your comments to two minutes. The other item on our agenda, item four, is an overview from the Chief Fiscal Officer and Controller of the various funds that are managed by our town and included in its audited financial statements outside of the general fund. There will be no public comment on item four. I'd also like to take a moment to address our board members. I've been proud to serve on this board for the last few years. During that time, and historically, I believe this board's been viewed by the community as one whose members are serious, thoughtful, and diligent, and as one that has a unique and important role in the governance structure of our town. During the same few years, I've seen frequent reports of other boards in our state and around the country who've made the news because they've embarrassed their communities through their behavior. I would guess that some or all of you have seen some of the same reports of board meetings where all sense of decorum was abandoned, with elected officials behaving unprofessionally, interrupting and yelling, using slurs and pejoratives to address their colleagues, abandoning facts, using public meetings as an opportunity to push divisive narratives that had little or nothing to do with the business before the body, and in a few instances, literally coming to blows. While I'm sure there are some who like to cheer that type of behavior on, I believe the public rightly views it with a sense of disgust because they expect more of their elected officials. And I do believe that while many citizens have lost confidence that our federal government can recover from its particular brand of dysfunction, they want and expect to see their local government to work. This board's last meeting, our budget vote, was far from the worst public meeting I've ever seen. But it also was not, in my opinion, a shining moment that our board should be proud of. There were countless violations of Robert's Rules around matters of basic decorum, a few of which were similar in type to what I cited a moment ago. And while some of these violations were called out during the meeting, many were not, and violations were repeated even after being called out. I will not single anyone out here because the rule violations weren't limited to any one individual or one political party, and I'm also not blameless. I'm also not going to speculate as to whether any individual engaged in that conduct deliberately or simply lost their cool because that type of speculation is in itself a violation. But I will say this. This board needs to work together as colleagues on behalf of our community. We are each individuals and have a variety of views on any given subject, and that's good as far as it goes. But as in any organization, or business, or personal relationship, divergent views only become a strength when they're debated in good faith and listened to among individuals who have relationships that are grounded in mutual respect. So getting back to Robert's Rules. The latest version, which I happen to have in paperback, is 714 pages. Some of us are better versed in the rules than others. All of us are human and will make mistakes. But even if the rules on procedural items are extensive or confusing, the rules around decorum in meetings are not. So as a common reminder of how we're expected to conduct ourselves, I'll cite one passage in the rules. And it's this. Debate must be confined to the merits of the pending question. Speakers must address the remarks to the chair, maintain a courteous tone, and especially in reference to any divergence of opinion, avoid injecting a personal note into the debate. To this end, they must never attack or make any allusion to the motives of members. So with that reminder for each of us, myself included, I'd like to move on, as the colleagues we are, to the business on our agenda. So we will move on to item three. To hear, consider, and act upon a request from the Board of Selectmen to appropriate $120,000 from the WPCA fund balance to complete the microgrid project. As I mentioned earlier, this item was put before us during our March 31st meeting and was postponed until this meeting with a request for additional information. The information related to this item is on pages one to five of the posted backup. And I believe we have our WPCA superintendent, Mr. John Bodie, here to take us through it.
Yes.
Okay, welcome back, Mr. Bodie, and thank you for providing the additional backup information. The floor is yours.
Thank you for having me. Good evening, everyone. I would like to start by apologizing for conveying wrong information about the switches needed at the three buildings for the microgrid integration. Page three of my support documentation, which is originally dated September 16th, 2021, and revised on December 7th, 2021, show a change order for material and labor to connect to the microgrid, to the solar panels, at fire training, conservation, and the dog pound. These three buildings were not in the original 2015 design. Were added at some point after the final design, and then solar panels were added to the buildings during another project. The microgrid needs to see all the buildings that will be tied in. It needs to see the load, and in this case, it needs to see the electricity produced. So I was false in saying that these were commandeered by a solar company. The solar project was completed. It was just not designed into the original plan. So I apologize for misconstruing what I thought was true. So I hope that kind of solidifies and gives everybody an understanding of what actually needs to be done here and what the money's going to be used for.
Thank you, Mr. Bodie. Comments, questions from board members? Anyone? Okay. Oh, Mr. DeWitt.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Chris DeWitt. Mr. Bodie, listen, as the person who commented on your 14 points the last time, I want to commend you that the 14 points in here are spot on, exactly what we're looking for, and I appreciate the information and your update tonight. So thank you. I think I can support both these motions tonight. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Other questions? Mr. Walsh.
Evening, Mr. Bodie.
Good evening.
Thank you for the new documentation, especially explaining about the $19,000, which, as you know, I had an issue with the last time when it was mentioned that the solar company that had come in had basically used our, I guess, electric switches, or were they electric boxes, or whatever you said, and they were about a $19,000 add, but that turns out not to be true any longer because those three buildings were never part of the original plan, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And what were they? Can you just correct my terminology? Were they electric boxes or switches, or what were they?
I'm not sure exactly what the solar company put on there. It must be to integrate the panels to the building. We just needed to add these boxes that are listed on page three to integrate the microgrid to the solar panels. The microgrid program needs to see all inputs to properly control it.
So I understand that there's three new buildings that were not part of the plan, but I thought you had mentioned at the last meeting that the solar panels were not part of the original plan either. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So did the solar company that come in use our either electric outlets or boxes that the town of Fairfield had paid for? And did they end up using them?
No.
During what they -- whatever work they did for us?
No, because the solar panels were installed. I'm not sure, but it was prior to 2021, and this change order was not given to Schneider until the end of last year. So the solar panel was a separate project. They installed all their equipment, and as Yankee Electric came in to connect everything, they found out they needed more equipment to tie in the solar panels that were put up.
Yankee Electric works for the town of Fairfield, or do they work for the solar company?
They work for Schneider Electric that's doing the microgrid. The solar company, I don't know who is Yankee, does not work for them.
Okay. So there were no additional outlets that we'd originally put in as pursuant to the original plan that were just sitting there that the solar company tied into? Is that what you're saying?
That is correct.
Thank you for the 14-point presentation. I have no further questions, and I will support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Other questions, comments from the board? Okay.
Really quick one.
Mr. Stark.
Yeah. The -- so no equipment was -- no existing equipment was misused by the new contractor, and no one billed for equipment that was already there, which I think was what we were worried about last week. Is that fair?
That's correct.
Does the backup -- maybe I missed it. Does the backup give a breakdown of what's in the 92,000 change order?
On the 14 points, there's a project cost.
Okay. Great, okay, that's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Stark. Other comments, questions? Okay, seeing none, there are no requests for public comment, so we will put this item for a vote. All in favor of approving the appropriation described in item three, please raise your hand, say aye. Ms. Charlton, Mr. Stark, Mr. Walsh, Mr. DeWitt, Mr. Curly, Mr. Testani, Mr. Matola, Ms. Marman. Okay, Ms. Leclair is not here with us tonight, so the motion carries eight-zero. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bodie. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'm going to move to item four. To hear an overview of non-general funds included in the town's comprehensive annual financial report and the related fund accounting and policy. So information for this item begins on page six of the posted backup. It's also noted in the backup that the CAFER, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, will be referenced through the discussion. If anyone, if any member of the public or a board member doesn't have a printed copy of the CAFER handy, it's posted on the town website. You can find it if you navigate to Departments, Finance Department, and Annual Financial Reports, and the document is titled 2020-2021 Annual Financial Report. Okay, so with that, I will turn this over to Mr. Schmidt and Ms. Bossi. Thank you so much for being here and providing the overview. Floor is yours.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, everybody. I'm going to give a quick overview of what's in here, and then Caitlin, who did the work on this, can go into some more detail on it. This came about when we made a talk early on when the first Selectman was delivering the budget, and we had a proposal to utilize some of the balance that was in the outside jobs fund for the police and to use that to purchase the vehicles. And so it spawned some other questions about what other funds exist. So that's where -- that's the genesis of this. And so I will go -- if it's okay, I'll share my screen, and maybe that'll be helpful. Everybody can follow along. That's all right.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So start with the second page of that part of the packet. This is just a kind of high level. What are the funds? What are the categories of different funds that we have and use? And Caitlin has put the count, the number of funds, next to each one, so you can see that the special revenue funds is one of the big categories where there are 14 different funds within there. Debt service fund, permanent funds, proprietary funds, the capital fund, OPEB, and the pension funds. And then the next page is, you see a breakdown here. As I mentioned, the special revenue was a larger category, so you can see the specific funds within there. And they kind of run the gamut of all different sources and uses of funding. Next to one, there's a smaller category. One is the debt service fund, but the others are permanent funds, which are, these are really, you know, funds that are separate and don't -- they aren't funded with town funds and are mostly funded by outside contributions and have a board or some other authority that governs what happens to the money. And then the last page of the backup is a -- because this kind of relates to two of the topics in there, which includes the debt service fund as well as the capital funds, and kind of crosses over too with the bonding process. And so I just wanted to give everybody an overview of what, you know, some of the highlights of the bonding process. So with that, I will pass it off to Caitlin if she wants to go into more detail about some of the specifics of these.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Ms. Bossi, thank you again for being here. As you step through the different funds, could you touch on -- I'm sure you will touch on the funding source and the use, but maybe you can also touch on who has authority over the fund in terms of managing it, deciding what expenses are approved, or any other policies relating to the fund? I think that might be helpful for the board. And also, if I could make another suggestion, maybe since each of these funds is somewhat unique in terms of all those factors, you know, it might be helpful to have Q and A after each fund versus going through all of them? So if you don't mind, maybe we can do that. I don't know if the board members want this screen up or if you just prefer to look at your CAFER so that we can see each other. Easier for me to look at the CAFER. Does anybody else need the screen? No?
I'd rather look at the CAFER, frankly.
Okay. All right, that would be helpful, I think. Do you mind taking the chair down? Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to kind of go in the order that the backup was presented in, and we're going to start with the special revenue funds. As Lori mentioned, they start on -- kind of the revenue expense income side kind of starts on page 121 of the CAFER, the hard copy, 121. I'm not sure what that is online, but they start at Schedule 5. So I'm just going to kind of take it in the order of which it comes. There's 14 that are listed kind of column-wise in the CAFER, so I'm just going to kind of start at the beginning. Page one of three of Schedule 5. Again, that's page 121 of the hard copy. So it's probably around there somewhere if you're pulling it up online. Special assessments. This is one fund, one older fund that had to do with -- I learned a little bit about sanitary sewers this afternoon. They were originally installed in 1947 in our town. So that was the original. Since then, there hasn't been a lot. There's been sanitary sewers that have been added when we add new roads. As you guys can imagine, it does not happen frequently at this point. There's only kind of one that's open right now called Meadow Ridge down in Southport. So what it is, it's an assessment that homeowners were assessed, calculated on the frontage of their road. That was a sewer assessment way back when, so to speak. So this fund has been around a long time. About 10 years ago, they stopped. What the town did was they issued bonds for these sewers way back when. And we issued bonds. So what this sewer assessment did, this fund, was they would take assessments in, kind of like through our tax collector. Everyone was assessed a fee, and then we had expenses related to our debt repayment of the bonds that were issued for these sewers. So as you can imagine, there's really not a lot going on on this fund anymore. I don't think there was any revenue or expenses in fiscal '21. So really, I went back and I looked. The last expense was in 2012, so that was the last 20-year repayment on our debt. And we do get some small revenue in per year from smaller assessments that are still kind of going on. I spoke with -- so the newer ones are 10-year assessments. From what I learned today from Chris Rogers, is the town, WPCA, is actually picking up half, which is basically the 10-year piece, through their sewer extension policy. So they're actually fronting half of the money for these smaller sewer extensions that are going on in town. So technically, the small balance that resides in that fund of about $130,000 is really under the authority of the WPCA of kind of how -- because they're kind of fronting half of the money on these assessments. Occasionally, they get new requests from different streets to extend sewers. But again, not a lot of activity, smaller funds, nothing really going on. So that's kind of what that special assessment fund is. So that's the 135. Again, no activity for fiscal '21. The next one is probably --
Before you go on, Ms. Bossi, before you go on, does anyone have questions on this fund? Mr. Testani?
Yeah, just one. Hey, Caitlin, how are you? Thanks for coming tonight.
Good to be here.
Good to see you. I'm sorry, you were -- I just didn't see that in the CAFER, that amount you just referenced. Is that in the CAFER?
The 135,000?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you look on, I don't know if you have the hard copy, the 131, that's the fund balance in that fund right now.
Where -- is that one of three? Or I'm just trying to find where they are.
It's page 118.
121.
Yeah, either one. The first couple, Schedule 4, is the assets and liabilities. It's the balance sheet side. So normally, people like to look at the revenue and expense. So that's on page 121. It's the same fund balance on both. One is just showing the assets and the liabilities versus the revenue and the expense.
Thanks, Caitlin.
Thank you, Mr. Testani. Does anyone else have questions on this fund? Okay. Just a quick one, Ms. Bossi, if I could. So this 130,000 is for the WPCA. Is there any -- is it just sort of going to sit here in perpetuity? Or is there any plan to do anything or to transfer that money to the WPCA at some point? WPCA fund?
I have not spoken to John Bodie about it. Literally, I just learned of this, what it really, what this balance kind of represents. I didn't know that the WPCA was somewhat taking on half of the assessment for some of these newer roads. So I'm going to touch base with John at some point and figure out exactly how that should be spent or if they're spending and planning on using that to extend the sewer policy.
Okay, yeah, thank you. If you could let us know, that'd be helpful.
Sure.
All right, thank you. And so any other questions before Ms. Bossi moves on? Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next column is probably one a little bit more known to you guys, the Community Development Block Grant. Every year, we get federal funds that is administered through the Community and Economic Development Office through Mark Farmhart. So they get this funding approved. They then list out the programs that the money's going to be used for, and that's what the revenue and the expenses are basically all about. And any fund balances timing, they're actually on a federal fiscal year, so a lot of their expenses and revenues flow through to a September 1 date. So that's a little bit more ongoing. They get a new grant every year, so there's a lot of activity that always flows through there. So everything -- so what the town does is it spends some money for all these programs, and then it requests, it's called a drawdown, through the federal system, and then we get all of that money back into the town coffers as a result of those approved expenses.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the board on this one? No? I just have a quick one. Ms. Bossi, can you explain the loan receivable of $1.875 million that's on the balance sheet of this fund?
Yeah, so part of their programs is that they give first-time buyers loans through their grant program, and we track the loan, and they're then required to pay back. I don't know the terms of the loan, but that's part of one of their programs, is a first-time homeowner loan.
So who -- so does the town collect this receivable? Or how does the receivable get satisfied?
It also flows through the grant. So I'm not sure if they have to pay it back or if it's a payback when they sell the house. I'm not sure of the actual terms of the loan, but it's tracked through March -- I get a listing every June 30 on the who owes and the dollar amount. And so we make sure that our receivable is in line with their records. And it's tracked also through the town clerk records as well because that loan is then recorded through the town clerk's office.
Okay, but are we collecting from individuals? Or is this receivable like another grant receivable?
The individuals pay it back.
Okay. And if they don't pay us back, then what? We?
I believe there's a loan on -- I think there's a loan on their house. So when the property sells, we're the first lien holder.
I see. Okay, thank you.
There's a mortgage on their house with the grants, so we would foreclose on them.
Yeah. So we are actually the administrator for these loans, effectively. I mean, the collection agent, okay. And do you know roughly how many loans that is? Just curious.
I have a listing that I could share with you. If I had to guess off the top of my head, I would guess 20 to 30. It's just from me remembering the list as of June 30. But I do have a listing by homeowner, by address, by amount.
Got it. All right, thank you. Other questions from the board on this item? Okay, thank you.
The next column is actually on the Board of Ed's side. I'm not sure if Courtney's had time or an opportunity to kind of look at that special education column, just to keep it in order.
Thanks, Caitlin. I just got notified this afternoon, so I'm going to speak to what I do know, and then if there are questions, I can follow up and get back to you on it. I believe the special education, when we were looking at the revenues and tying out to the town financial statement, are all revenues, so we probably need to work with the auditors to relabel that, meaning all federal and state revenues that are not the ECS that does go directly to the town. And so I think that's just a mislabel. A bulk of the fund is special education, but that does include our title grants as well as other -- well as other funding that's not related to special education. This, the responsibility for all of our federal and state grants lies with the Board of Education, and it's managed through the state's e-grant system, even the federal that's a pass-through. So it depends on if it's a title grant, an entitlement grant, we get, receive the grant based on a formula, or if it's an application that we have to do. It's all managed for these grants through the state e-grant system, including those ARP and SER funding, the new federal funding. That's a pass-through, so that's managed by the Board of Ed. And it depends on the terms of the grants, whether it runs, the timeframe that it runs, and the timeframe that we have to draw down and spend the funds. The fund balance for this is likely due, and again, I, I only just looked at the numbers today, so I apologize, but to accruals. So we have, like Caitlin mentioned, on the federal grants for the Community Development Block Grant, until September to draw down these funds. And so any fund balance would likely be due to that, but I can look into that more carefully and get back to you on that.
All right, thank you, Ms. Laborious. Questions on this one? Mr. DeWitt?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Chris DeWitt, and thank you, Ms. Laborious, for being here. I'm kind of surprised that you don't know about this, because this, this is, this is quite a bit of money in, in the, in the fund balance. And I, I was, I was tracking at the beginning, but I gotta tell you, I got a little lost here. So I'm, I'm, I'm still not quite understanding what this is doing and what this is paying for. I mean, the, the revenues and the expenditures are, are obviously not the same. So, you know, what, what are we really paying for with the special governmental fund?
Sure. So the way that we're set up, we have funds that are state funds, federal funds, and then a series of other funds. So for the special revenue, I just don't know, because I was just told today, how the auditors are classifying special ed. My assumption, when I look at the numbers that I just looked at today, I apologize, is that they're pulling together all of our funds that are not ECS, and it's just mislabeled as special education.
I'm sorry, not ECS?
Yeah, sorry, education cost sharing. So, yeah, our education cost sharing funds go directly to the town, and it's given to us as part of our appropriation from the town. The revenue that comes to the Board of Education totals approximately for 2021 8.3 million. So that includes special education funding, and it includes all other funding. So without having the crosswalk for how the auditors are reporting out on this particular fund type, you know, I apologize that I can't answer exactly. But I do believe it's all of our grant funding, state and federal, which includes our title grants, Title 1, 2, 3, 4, our ARP grants, IDEA, as well as tuitions. So it's every dollar that's received to the Board of Ed, I believe, with exception being the ECS, which flows directly to the town.
No, I, I appreciate that. So, you know, I don't want you, I don't, I don't want you to speculate any further if you can provide the data. Sounds like you weren't given a lot of notice, so if you could provide that data. But the one, the one question I do have left is this. When you say it's controlled by the Board of Ed, that means that, to me, that's not controlled by central office. So does the Board of Education have to take action on something through this fund?
No. So we, the, the central office is authorized to apply for and monitor and report out on the grant funding. So we report out on our applications, and we report out as part of our regular quarterly expenditure report on the general fund side. We also do a regular grant report. So we report on the budgeted revenues, the expenditures against the revenues, and the projected expenditures against those revenues as well. We also report out on that at the year-end close as well.
Got it. All right. Well, I, I would appreciate seeing the, the other information when you get it. So thank you.
Okay, sure.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Other questions on this fund from board members? None? Okay. Just one clarifying question. Who, so Ms. Laborious, I assume you do the accounting for this. It sounds like you do the accounting for this separately, but when the financial statements are put together, the auditors compile this information. Is this, maybe this is a question for Ms. Bossi. Is this information compiled by the auditors or by you when the, when the audited financials are put together?
So Courtney and I spoke about this. I don't provide any information for, there's basically three special revenue items on, kind of, there, the Board of Ed's in a separate database. So when I, when the auditors come to me, I basically do a data dump of my ledger. I'm assuming what happens on the Board of Ed's side is that they request the same type of information, and they get a data dump of every account on their side in their database. So I'm, I'm assuming kind of what happens is that they're putting together the financials, I guess, from that data. I'm not 100% sure, but I'm not providing any information on those, on the special revenue funds for the Board of Ed.
Yeah, and so the link with what they do with that. So I just think that potentially, maybe historically, it might have been misclassified as special education, and that it could be, because I can't, I can't see any other way that I can make sense of that. Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. It just seems to me that when they, when the draft of the financials is, is available, you should, you know, Ms. Laborious, you should be reviewing this and making sure that this data is in agreement or reconciles to your, your reporting, particularly if you, you know, you've got separate reporting that's going to the Department of Education or whoever, so.
Yes, and that likely did happen with my predecessor, so it will certainly happen this year with Caitlin and myself working closely.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Caitlin, you were?
No, just, just to follow up on that. So it, it appears that there's 14 special revenue funds in, in our annual report, when in reality, there are some, it happens on my side, funds that are kind of similar that could group together. So it could be that they, he put a, a heading of special education on it, because that was maybe the biggest dollars that were flowing through there. Just to give you a feel, so there's kind of 14 columns, right, representing 14 special funds, when in reality, I have about 25. But because some are smaller, they act like other funds, he's kind of putting them together because it, it kind of becomes cumbersome to have 25 different funds listed out here that maybe have no activity, maybe are $30,000. So kind of some stuff gets lumped together, so I'm wondering maybe if that's what happened on the side as well.
Yeah, and, and I think so, Caitlin. Thank you. So I think in future, we just label it education, including special education, or just footnote so that it's clear. But, um, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on this item? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Bossi.
Okay. So the next column is labeled recreation. As you guys can imagine, the rec trust is probably 90 to 95% of this, but there is also another fund called Southport Harbor Management that's also rolling into recreation. It's a recreational type of fund that was previously, maybe five years ago, that was residing on our balance sheet. That, as you know, as auditors, they don't like to see, you know, the revenue and expense kind of netted together. So we created a new fund for Southport Harbor Management. So that's, you know, about 250,000 of this balance of recreation, and it's for mooring cliffs down in Southport Harbor. Southport Harbor Street is a little bit differently than our, than our Marina. So this is the Southport Harbor piece. So again, revenue comes from mooring, and the expenses are for maintaining the harbor, which runs through the Harbor Commission. So that's a piece of the recreation, and the bigger piece of almost a million dollars is the rec trust, which I think you guys kind of speak to every now and again. Anthony kind of comes forward every now and again. There's revenue over a threshold of, I think, $200,000 that flows into the general fund every September after the programs kind of all settle out, with the revenue coming in in February and the programs running through the summer months. So that's basically, and the rec trust is basically running through the Park and Rec Commission as, as well, as, as well as the Park and Rec Department. And they have their own policy that talks about their trust, and they have regulations and guidelines that they use to, for the expenses that run through there. And it's basically all of the programs. This is summer camps, this is soccer, it's the fitness center, it's everything not flowing through the, the general fund. It's not the golf courses. It's every, all the other programs, when you get your brochure, it's all those programs running through there, where the revenue from the people who are taking the programs are then offsetting with the expense of the program. So that's, that's basically the revenue column.
Okay, questions on this fund? None? Okay, so this is the, I'm sorry, Mr. Curly.
Yeah, just to, I'd love a little bit more color, Caitlin, just to understand. Some of the funds that you described previously, you talked about just a timing difference between, you know, the inflow and outflow. Is, is the recreation trust working the same way? Is the intent that folks will pay for a program for summer? For example, they'll pay it early, and then it sits there until it's used? Or help me understand the timing difference that might create this balance?
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna pick one program, just because I think it's the biggest and the biggest revenue generator, is summer camp. Okay, so Anthony runs playgrounds, he runs Action Squad, he runs summer camp. They go to Cross the Pond, they have trips every week, they have food trucks. All of that registration for summer camp happens in February. Okay? So, and as you can imagine, the summer camps basically start at the end of June, early July. So it's crossing fiscal year. So hence, their policy for, hey, if there's any money over $200,000, is an October 1 date, because by October 1, they're kind of assuming all of the camps, all the expenses are finally in, they're through, we paid all the counselors, we paid all the food trucks, we paid everything, because those camps basically run through mid-August. So it gives them about a month or so to kind of get all those expenses through. So come October 1 is when the trust policy designates anything over $200,000 comes to the town. And that's what we've been using every year. So it is a little bit, because of COVID, things were a little bit screwed up, because they got revenue, but then they, they didn't run the, so they got revenue, what, in February of 2020, but the camps didn't run because of COVID. So things were kind of a little bit screwed up for a while. So if you look at the revenues, I think we're still seeing the effects of COVID. This should probably be the first year where, yeah, we're actually gonna get revenue in February of 2022, but expenses are gonna go out really in fiscal '23 for that. So things should start kind of evening out again. But the September 1 date, or the October 1 date is still the date at which they look at that balance and they bring it into the general fund. And I believe Anthony has some revenue budgeted this year, because I believe the last couple years he didn't, due to the programs not running.
Thank you, Caitlin. That's very helpful. Appreciate that.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Curly. Other questions on this fund? Okay. And Caitlin, I don't want to jump ahead, but is this, is this the only fund out of the special revenue funds that has a, a policy, if you will, on transferring excess dollars to the general fund?
Off the top of my head, I'm gonna say yes. We have policies for other funds, but not that correspond to a certain date and dollar amount coming, flowing into the general fund. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, public safety. Now, this is the one I think we got into a little bit a few weeks ago. So this public safety column that's recognized as one special revenue fund, in reality, in my world, is four, five, six. And I think we, we kind of spoke about this a few weeks ago, like I said. The biggest driver is clearly the outside jobs for police and fire. That's, that's almost a million of the, the 1/6 that's in there. I think we talked about that fund, how revenue is generated from the outside jobs, the expenses are flowing through payroll. So that's the out, that's the bulk of it. The other smaller pieces to that is a service grant, which accounts for about $40,000, which is a grant that comes through the Department of Children and Families. It's probably about $30,000, $40,000 a year. Again, they kind of give us money, they run some, we use it for troubled youth, so that's why it's kind of running through the public safety kind of column here. And again, expenses are reported back to the state for that grant. Regional fire school, a budget that you guys know about, you approve the budget. We get some funding from the state, from the Department of Emergency Services, and we also run classes through there. So that's basically how that fire school, that's running through the public safety sector as well, was about 300 of that balance last year. So really, the expenses are governed by state guidelines and the fire school. Them holding classes, people paying for the classes, and then the expense of running those classes through the school. Smaller pieces, federal narcotics forfeiture fund, about $40,000 is running through there. That, I shouldn't say running through there. That's the balance as of June of '21. It's distributed from the U.S. Department of Justice, and it's related to the federal task force participation. So funds are, again, expended in compliance with that grant, and as being part of the equitable sharing program through the federal grant guidelines. On the same vein, we had a little bit of state narcotics forfeiture fund balance as well. There's about 100,000 or so of it resides with the state. Recovery is from the State Department of Emergency Service and Public Protection. And again, funds are expended in compliance with state regulations. Reporting is done yearly by the police department on how they expended the funds for those types of expenditures. Lastly, is dog license fund. As you guys know, if you have a dog, you have to pay a little fee to the town clerk, and then per the state statute, they have surcharges for unspayed and spayed dogs, which is then paid to the state, and the expenses are anything related to the licensing of those dogs. So kind of those, all those funds are kind of rolling up to that public safety column here. So a lot of it is basically through grant guidelines and state and federal type of policies.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the board on this one? None? Okay. I actually have a couple of quick ones, Ms. Bossi. The first is, so the fund has investments in it. I realize it only has fund balances of last June of 1.6 million, and that will be reduced by the end of this year after the purchase of the police vehicles. But the fund has investments in it of 8,658, offset by due to other funds, which I presume is the general fund?
Yeah.
So I guess my question is, is there a reason that the investments are maintained in this fund versus being, you know, why isn't that liability to the general fund satisfied and the cash transferred to the general fund?
Well, there's no, it's all part of the pooled cash concept. So any investment you see there, there's no separate account, there's no separate checking account for, for those really, you can probably net that investment with a due-to, due-from, and I'm not sure why it wasn't netted out, but it's all part of the pooled cash. There's no separate accounts for, for these, these, these funds.
Okay, so the, any, you know, investment earnings on, on those investments would, would go to the general fund?
Yeah, it's all part of the pooled cash concept, yes. Which is why 95% of it is in that, that investment line on that asset sheet. The only cash really, if I'm looking back at page 118, is the recreation has a small checking account that has 60,000 dollars on it, and that's the one Schedule Four right now. It's all part of the, the pooled cash. So really, that 8.6 could have been netted to the 7.1.
Okay. Yeah, probably if, if the, you know, if the benefit of those investments is really accruing to the general fund, seems like it, you know, the receivable should be not netted, but basically eliminated, right? Sort of the general fund paid back, if you will. I guess my other question is, and this came up, maybe it was Mr. Matola, I don't recall, but can you just talk a little bit about the, I think you, can you just talk a little bit about any policy around the fund balance or lack thereof, and sort of authority to... And sort of authority to, you know, to spend the money here? I think there, I think when it, when it first came up, there was just confusion around, you know, was it the police commission? Was it, you know, the First Select Woman? Who, what, is there a policy? And, and what's the thinking on that, if not?
Jared, I'm not sure if you want to take that one on, but um.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take it on. Right, as of right now, we've kind of just gone off of the past practice with the fund. Because over the, over a number of years, up until, let's say, the last three or four years, money, the money came into the, into the fund and the money went out to pay the officers working, working on those jobs. And it was, you know, there were different balances from year to year. Generally speaking, over those, those years, it kind of evened out. And then over the last three or four years, we saw the balance grow. And so that, you know, when it got to the point where it is this year, we thought that, you know, we should do, we should do something, something, something should happen with this. And came up with the idea, which my understanding was not novel, but the, and had been discussed before, was using some of that money to pay for the, the police cars. We had, we actually have been working on a draft policy to use these funds. I, I know that, I know that the board made the decision to put the, at least the amount of funding for the nine police cars into the budget and then, and also to have the appropriation in there as well. You know, to me, it would make more sense to come up with a policy, maybe not similar, but in the, in the same vein of the, the rec trust fund and to do something like that. Just because the revenue is, the revenue is so volatile in there. And, you know, it, to me, it makes sense to keep it out of the general fund. But to have a policy that obviously the board signs on to. And so we, you know, look forward to hopefully having more of a conversation about this with you all and to present you with a draft of a proposal for how we, how this funding could be used and what that policy would look like.
Sorry, Ms. Bossi, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, just also, there is an RFP going out. So we might, so this whole, the whole dynamic of this fund might change a little bit if it does in fact go to a consultant type of firm. So whether, whether it actually goes that way or not, we're not sure. But the RFP is gonna go out, I believe sometime this week. So it'll be interesting to see how the revenue and expenses might change a little bit. At least the timing of the, the revenue coming in. From what I understand, there is a proposal that possibly a firm might be giving us the money as opposed to us collecting the money from the UY, the Southern Connecticut Gap, the actual vendor itself. So this, this balance might be a little bit different? Or, or the timing of the flows of the revenue might be changing at some point?
Thank you, Mr. Curley.
Yeah, just to, thank you, Madam Chair, just to follow up, Jared. If I heard you correctly, you, you had talked about how you, you would notice that this fund was, this fund balance was growing over the last few years and that, that you're supportive of forming a policy as to how these funds would be used. But I guess it just begs the question that John Matola had asked, I believe. And I don't want to speak for you, John, but it was certainly the question that I had too, is in advance of that policy being established, do we know who has the authority to, to draw from this fund? And is it, is it the First Select Woman? Is it the administration? Is it the police commission? Just want to make sure we're, we're on solid legal ground in using these funds.
Yeah, so as I, as I said, the, you know, the practice has been for, for, for the police to pay their officers. So it hasn't, because they haven't really deviated from that, from my understanding in, in the past, in past years. So they haven't had other, other things to spend it on, whether it's cars or, you know, anything other than paying the police officers for their time on the jobs. So there hasn't really been any, any need for, or, or, or any request for some other policy or, or some other authorization to spend the money.
Okay. I, I get it, we haven't had the large balance in the past. We haven't needed this fund for things other than paying the officers for those side jobs and overtime and such. But I guess it still begs the question, right? We're using this, funds from this account to pay for police cars, which I think is a great idea if we, if we have, we, big picture, have the authority to do that. But we have, I'm just asking the question as to whether the town attorney was consulted or whether the police commission was consulted, or are they supportive? I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure that we, we're on solid legal ground here.
I know that the police commission approves their, the rates that they charge. And I will follow up with the, with the town attorney. He'll, obviously, his opinion will, will play into whatever policy we come up with.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curley. Mr. Matola?
Hey, thank you, Jared, you're, you were thinking what I was thinking. I was thinking that since the police commission sets the rates, you know, maybe that's, maybe, maybe the town needs to go to them to approve something like this. And, and I appreciate the fact that you said you're gonna consult with the town attorney. I think that's a, a smart and wise thing to do. So thank you for, for saying that. And, and again, I, I think it's a terrific idea how you guys decided to use these funds this year. So thanks for that, but just follow up with the town attorney. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Matola. Other comments, questions from the board? Okay, none? Okay, yeah, maybe Mr. Schmidt, I'll just, just maybe throw out a, a comment, food for thought. This, this fund, so we talked about the recreation fund and how excess dollars, you know, on a regular basis typically get transferred into the general fund. This one, you know, seems a little different. I mean, we're, we're spending the money on specific items. And so I think what was done this year is to only transfer the money and that was going to be utilized to buy cars versus transferring, you know, had we had a policy to transfer the excess, we might have transferred a bunch of money into the general fund as revenue, which was then not going to be spent, which would then just, you know, fall to the mill rate. And I'm not sure that's the, that would be a great outcome if, if the idea would be to use this money to benefit the police budget in some fashion? So, you know.
You know, I, and I agree with you.
Yeah, I just think about, I just sort of think about that in terms of any policy. I guess two things, maybe that, maybe having a target fund balance, if you will, if you were going to go that route. I think putting it in the general fund this year as a gross-up was sort of this board acknowledging that, yes, in fact, everybody understands that this money is being used for this purpose and it's not sort of happening on a fund to the side. And so it, it became part of the official budget by doing that. So if, if that's not the best answer, then, then another policy might be appropriate. But it doesn't feel like you'd want to just transfer revenue in that you wouldn't be spending for the purpose that this special revenue fund collects money for, so.
I completely agree.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, Mr. DeWitt?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Chris DeWitt. I, I was gonna say the same thing. The excess money that we take out of the, out of the recreation fund, we don't specify that has to go to recreation. So I don't know why the police commission would have a say in, in, in where this money goes. So I, I, I think we treat it, we should treat it the same way as the recreation fund. I mean, if, if, if the answer is recurring buying of, of police cars and there's that amount of revenue, then that would go in the policy. But I don't think it's a foregone conclusion that it has to go toward, you know, specifically that, that purpose. So, and I think, I think you and, and our CFO said the same thing, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Any other comments from the board? Okay, all right, Ms. Bossi, we can move on.
Okay, the next column being shellfish. Kind of a small little fund that hangs, that hangs out there all on its own sum. The revenues are from shellfish licenses. And the expenses go for maintaining the shellfish bed per state regulations. And I believe the shellfish commission oversees the expenditures through there.
Okay. Questions on this fund? Okay, looks like none.
Okay, the next, affordable housing, a somewhat newer fund. You guys, I, I think you've, you've seen this in the past couple of years, the use of some of these funds. The revenue comes from permits and fees through our GPZ department. And the expenses go to support our town's affordable housing programs. And the, it's governed by the Affordable Housing Committee. And I believe there was, just to give you guys a little bit of lockdown memory lane, a little usage for a few houses over on Quincy Street that we are, are, there's about $2 million or so that were used to kind of build or to buy some properties over there. So I believe those are coming through the boards as well. But all of the details are really governed by the Affordable Housing Committee.
Questions on this fund from the board? Okay.
Okay, the last column on that page, ARPA, a brand new fund. As you guys know, we received the $12 million last year, which is about half of hopefully what we're expecting. And the revenue came from the federal grant. And the expenses have all been approved through the boards for pandemic-related costs. So really, the federal grant guidelines and the boards have approved all these expenditures running through that fund.
Okay, questions on this? All right, and it looks like this ARPA fund, as well as the Affordable Housing Fund, I'm assuming those investments are same, same as you mentioned previously, part of the pooled investments?
Correct.
Okay, so, and so any interest earnings on, on that ARPA fund money are, are part of the general fund? Interesting, okay. Can I just ask, I, I forgot to ask a question on the public safety fund I had. You, you mentioned something at one point about reporting being done annually on that fund. And I, I didn't, I didn't quite catch that. Who, who reports to whom?
So for that fund, the federal narcotics forfeiture and the state narcotics forfeiture, the police department fills out annual reports on any expenses that they've used through those funding sources.
Got it, okay. All right, sorry to go backwards. Go ahead.
The next two, I believe I'm gonna turn over to Courtney, if she's still on. The public school lunch fund and the school activity fund.
Yes, thanks, Caitlin. Okay, so the public school lunch fund is a separate entity. They have a separate bank account. And the school food authority, which is Fairfield Public Schools, is responsible for the administration and financial oversight of all child nutrition programs. You can, a district can either run a direct program or contract out with a food service manager. We do the latter, we contract out with a food service manager currently with Whitson's. The revenues are reflected, reflective of federal reimbursements on a per meal basis for lunch, breakfast, and then if we, we don't run a supper program. But, and then the charges for services are things like à la carte items that students purchase and then other fee for service that the food service company provides on a one-off basis, like for example, catering an event for us. Let's see, the, the expenses are your traditional expenses, cafeteria, staff, management, and food, the purchase of the food. This year, we're in a waiver period, I'm getting a little feedback, I'm sorry. And it's called the summer SSO, summer seamless operation. During this waiver period, we're reimbursed at a higher rate and all children eat for free. And that, we expect that waiver period to end. You're seeing a $574,000 fund balance in the school nutrition program because we are not allowed to go statutorily below zero in our fund balance for the nutrition program. We're also not allowed to carry more than three months of cash flow in our reserve. And so last year, my predecessor put before the board and the board approved a transfer of $525,000 from the Board of Ed to cover that need in the school nutrition program as a result of COVID. As a result of during that year, the pandemic year, we weren't open and we weren't operating as normal. And so we weren't drawing down the funds for giving out as much food as we would have normally done. So you can see that in the balance statement. In 1920, we had a 360K projected cash balance, which was a 393,000 fund balance. And in 2021, it was about $156,000, $181,000 fund balance. That included that $525,000 transfer. What were the other, I believe that, that was covering the responsibility. We also report out to the board on an annual basis on the condition of the nutrition program and/or as needed, if there's anything we need to bring up with the board.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Laborious. Questions from the board on this fund? Mr. Curley?
Yeah, I just want to understand the 525 transfer in just a little bit better. Had that transfer not occurred, I guess the deficit of $132,000 would have been an issue? Is that, I heard that correctly, and the, the 525 was determined based on a three-month run rate? Is that correct?
Well, their three-month last year was closer to $680,000. Three months is the max you can carry. I believe they determined the 525 was, was an acceptable number given what we had available in the, at the Board of Ed side to bring us to positive, you know, and give us sufficient cash flow to start this year.
Got it, okay, thank you, that's helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curley. Other questions on this item? Okay, none? Okay. Do you want to do the school activity fund, Ms. Laborious?
Sure, so the school activity, activity fund is also a separate entity. We do manage the bank reconciliation at year-end and give, give, give that to auditors. The principals oversee these accounts, the bookkeepers manage the day-to-day operations. We at Central Office have taken on a policy of signing the checks as of two or three years ago, although it's not required, we do do that. They, they provide a ledger report, a bank reconciliation and ending balance. And the book clerks monitor the checks and receipts throughout the year. This, let's see, and, and the type of things that the school activity fund covers is, for example, choir, yearbook, key clubs, math clubs, cap and ground, cap and gowns, purchases, donations to Make-A-Wish Foundation, various alumni groups. They will dedicate funds for a specific cause or purpose. Most of this fund balance that you see here is at the high school, it's about 80%. And the bulk of that being like year-end expenses, like cap and gown, graduation expenses and various, the alumni groups. The alumni groups carry forward, so they'll set forward a use of the funds for, like, over, for example, five years. And then if they don't spend it down for the intended purpose, they will revert that back to a general account. All of these activity funds are identified with a specific purpose and have to be spent for that specific purpose. and have to be spent for that specific purpose. And we oversee only at year-end the bank rec and then, you know, occasionally have to do a quick audit if there's a concern about a particular expense. The Board of Ed is in the process of looking at the policies around school activity funds, booster gifts and grants. And they're in the process of revising those policies and procedures. And right now, we have policies that dictate on the Board of Ed side how we manage the school activity funds that are a bit broad.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Laborious. Questions from the board on this one? Okay, none? All right, thank you, Ms. Laborious.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Bossy, you want to keep going with WPCA?
Sure, I think you guys all are aware of the WPCA. Obviously, the budget is set every year in coordination with the commission and that runs through all the three boards as well. So it's revenues and expenses related to the operation of the town through our system.
Any questions on this? Okay, thank you.
The next is miscellaneous grants. It is one fund, but there's a multitude of grants that runs through here. Every department, as you know, a lot of them come before your boards, come for approval, and it's basically those, 99% of it is grant revenue and expenses relating to all the town departments per our grant policy. So our grant policy specifies what basically, I think it's all grants under, I think it's $19,000 or $19,999. Those can be signed off internally by the first select woman, but all other grants are running through all three boards. So it's all revenues, all expenses associated with a plethora of grants for everything you could ever imagine. And we're seeing it increase with our grant coordinator as well. So she's helped tracking, she's helped writing, she's been helping all of the department heads with every aspect of grants, acquisition, procurement, tracking, and guiding them. So that's really been a big help to our finance department as well.
Thank you, Ms. Bossy. Questions on this one? Okay, so just a quick clarification. So all of this, so the grant activity and the spending on these grants never touches the general fund, right?
Correct.
Okay.
It touches the general fund if there's a town match associated with a grant, but that's the only case.
Got it, okay. But these are typically not, the expenses are not operational expenses per se. They're one-time, they're non-recurring items, if you will, so they're, okay, thank you.
Downtown parking, downtown parking fund, it's actually downtown improvement. Revenue comes from the downtown employee parking permit. And we have a lot of the various Fairfield Center events and functions running through there, the shopping stalls, the restaurant week. The expenses are used to maintain the parking lots, Fairfield Center and improvements, and any fees needed to maintain the various events. This fund is governed by Community and Economic Development Department, Mark Barnhart's department, and the Economic Development Commission also is notified of these funds flowing through here. In a conversation with Mark Barnhart today, he's in the midst of doing a sidewalk project with engineering. So some of the funds, he's committing some of the funds to help out with their maintaining the sidewalks in town in conjunction with some grants that Bill Hury's been going for as well. So that's basically, a lot of little things are running through here, the various events, but it's really for the downtown, the maintenance of the downtown area.
All right, thank you. Any questions on this one? Okay, it looks like none.
Okay, donations, pretty much speaks for itself. Almost, if I had to guess, maybe about 20 departments in town have donations that have been received from various groups, various people. And the expenses are all in compliance with our donation policy, which also runs concurrently through our purchasing policy. So any donations that we get run through our purchasing policy by the department and in conjunction with our donation policy.
Questions on this one? Mr. DeWitt?
We're looking at the purchasing policies, and I don't remember a donation policy in there. Well, what is our, what is our donation policy at a 50,000-foot level, if you don't mind, Caitlin?
Basically, it's saying that whenever a department receives revenue, they have to dictate if there's any restrictions or commitments that are associated with the donation. I have it in front of me, they have to maintain adequate controls. I mean, a lot of it is the same type of purchasing policies that the town currently uses today through the bid requirement. They are to give receipts to each donor, a letter, if that's what the donor wants. Any non-cash donations have to be acknowledged through a letter. The bank deposit must be timely. So a lot of it, a lot of the policies are the policy that we have internally anyways. All money dispersed from the fund must be made in accordance with the purpose of the person who donated it. They must be substantiated through receipts, they must be able to validate the official need. And again, it must go through the purchasing policy. So a lot of it is governed by our internal policies. And then there's also a letter that Connie's created, our internal auditor created, in terms of a letter that goes back to the person donating.
No, no, thank you for that. I didn't mean to, you know, I didn't want you to go in painful detail. But, I mean, I can look it up. I got to tell you, if you told, if you'd asked me yesterday that we get $756,000 of donations to the town, I would have, if somebody asked me, I would have said, there's no way. So what is it? What's a, what does a donation to the town look like? I mean, who gives them?
So I actually have a listing of the, about the 684, right? That was, just to give you a feel, I'm going to give you some of the bigger numbers. Sullivan Memorial Fund, $156,000. That is for the restoration of the town hall. That goes through an attorney, and he approved. A lot of the money hasn't actually been used in a while. So there's 156 of it right there. The Senior Center actually runs a lot of their programs through the donation fund, their life learners. If they have any trips from the seniors, because those aren't funded through the general fund. So if you go on a trip, you pay for the trip, and then the money for the trip comes out of this donation fund as well. Police and Fire actually have donations. K-9 has balances that fluctuate in there. Animal Control, people come down, they want to give money to buy dog food. Those are the bigger departments. I believe Anthony runs his, the concerts at Sherman Green. If there's a sponsor paying for the concert, that's running through these donation accounts as well. Conservation has about $40,000. Police and Fire, like I said, Animal Control, those are really the biggest, the biggest balances. Cert, Cert has $20,000 running through here. And again, there's some smaller ones. Trail Guide, they sell trail guides in town. Trail Guide has a balance of about $17,000.
Oh, sure, yeah.
So it's a lot of mishmash of just, Smith Richardson, you know, has $400. I mean, just a plethora of different, a lot of them are small balances, but some of them are biggest. And like I said, the Sullivan Memorial is actually the biggest, it's $156,000.
I think Mr. Curley put that 400 bucks in for Smith Richardson. All right, thank you.
I think it's been sitting there quite a while.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. That was my question too, so thank you for asking it. Other questions on this? Okay, and Ms. Bossy, just to be, just to clarify, it sounds like this is one of those funds that's a grouping. So do you actually have a separate fund and separate accounting for each donation from a donor so that you're tracking that, your spending on what that donor has made the contribution for?
No, the departments are keeping that level of detail.
Okay, okay. All right, and I get, well, never mind. I was going to say, I'm assuming there's not legal, so there aren't legal stipulations on those donations the way you would with a, something else, right? Someone's donating, but they're sort of trusting us to spend the money the way it's been designated?
I would say the one that's been restricted that I've seen lately is the Sullivan Memorial. So there is a trustee running through there. So I believe every expense that we have to go to the trustee who's maintaining it, and he says yes or no, yeah.
Gotcha.
But no, the other ones are a little bit more, you know, Animal Control. If you're giving down to the animal control facility, it's basically used for the maintenance of animals. So there's not a lot of stipulation.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on this or any of the special revenue funds? Okay. All right, Caitlin, I don't know which section you want to go on to.
All right, so, all right, so well, in conjunction with the top sheet that we kind of started with, if we go in order, the next one is the debt service fund, which corresponds to the next one listed on page 123 or page three of three for Schedule V. The debt service fund, as you guys know, really collects our premium from our bond issuances every year. So really, we're spending it in accordance with our Bond Council's three-year regulation of using the premium. So that's in theory what's running through this fund at this point. In the past, there had been surpluses that have, we haven't used this in a while for this, but there had been surpluses that have been put in there, which we then used to offset our debt service costs. But in the last couple of years, it's just been the premium running through, running through here, for the most part.
Questions on this fund? So Ms. Bossy, was this the fund, I'm trying to remember, where we, I think at one point, a few years ago, the board set aside, and correct me if I'm using the wrong terminology. I thought the board set aside surplus or voted to set aside surplus at the end of the year and designate that money for issues related to the fill pile. Was that parked in this fund?
It was temporarily, and then when we needed that money, we came back to you guys, and then it got moved to the Fill Pile Capital Fund.
Okay, so the fill pile money is now in a capital fund, and this fund is no longer used for that purpose?
Correct.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Okay, and going back to the sheet, which kind of goes in order again, is there's four, what we call permanent funds. They're really restricted by, going back to the last question, they're really restricted by a trust document or some type of legal document that tells you what these funds could be used for. They're very restrictive. And a lot of them is that you can only use the earnings, not the principal. So we do have the Smith Richardson Trust, the Simon and Kerry Peace Fund, and then there's library funds that are labeled permanent funds. Again, all regulated by trust documents. So the Smith Risk Conservation Trust has a trust document, and any expenditures that come out of that fund go to the Board of Selectmen. I believe, and you guys might have even seen it really, that there was a gate put up by, like, Mohegan. So those funds came out of there as well. But it's basically very restrictive, the trust document says what you can use these funds for. So that was about $485,000 at the end of last June. The next one is a small, it's a scholarship fund, that there's actually been talk of moving this over to the high school. This $20,000 has been sitting there, gosh, I don't know the year that it was, it predates me. But the revenue came from a contribution and the expenses need to be related to education and scholarships, according to the trust document. So because of the small dollar amount and due to the fact that the high schools give out scholarships, there is talk of moving that over to their bigger fund at some point. So this hasn't been used because there's really, hasn't been a lot of earning on this $20,000. So there is talk of at some point moving it over. The next one are, the newer ones that have been reported in the annual report is the Library Fund. There's a non-spendable piece and expendable piece. Again, all regulated through trust documents. And the spendable piece, I believe, is under the purview of the Board of Library Trustees. So that's that, you know, almost $9.8 million in that, in that, in those funds. Just to give you a feel, like, 70 of it is considered non-expendable. So that cannot be used. And there's about 9.6 or so that the Library Trust Fund does use. It's actually used to be, as you guys are probably aware, on the revenue side in our budget, we get money back from them for the debt service that was originally taken out for the main library. So those are governed by the Board of Library Trustees.
Thank you. Mr. DeWitt?
I'm sorry, can you repeat, how much of that 9.756 is spendable?
Almost all of it. There's only 70,000, I believe that's not.
Okay.
Yep.
And the spendable part of this is totally dependent on the library, the Friends of the Library, is that right?
No, it's not the Friends, it's the Board of Library Trustees. I believe the Friends is a separate trust.
Oh, Library Trustees, okay, got it, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
And there's a comprehensive trust document that itemizes out what those money could be used for as well.
Do we see that? I'd love to see that. Nine million dollars sitting around in the trust for the library. I'd love to see what is spendable. I like that, I'm going to keep using that word, spendable.
Yep, I can get that, someone over at the library sends me a yearly report, and I believe they, at some point, send us the trust document as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Other questions on this one? Okay, so Ms. Bossy, the 9.7 million, most of that is spendable, but you said the, what it can be spent on is governed by the trust document?
Correct.
Just, you know, high level, what does that mean? What types of things can that money be spent on?
Library programs, anything other than, it sounds like, because we kind of, you guys know, a lot of what we, we budget for really books, right, and materials. But a lot of the programming, a lot of some capital expenditures run through this trust as well. And this is not one of the pooled cash investments, and none of these permanent ones are part of pooled cash investment. So there's a separate investment statement that we get at the end of every June. But really, it's for, I mean, if you probably think about it, there hasn't been a lot of capital request from the library. A lot of those types of expenses are running through their trust, and a lot of the programs are running through their trust as well. And they do itemize out what they spend it on. And I believe their board, I think every quarter, they report it to their board, and their board goes over their expenses quarterly, from what I, from what I remember.
Okay, thank you. So programs and potentially capital. And can I just ask, why is, you said the Friends is separate, right?
Yeah, I believe that's a nonprofit organization, yeah.
Okay, so that's, so this one's in the financial statements and that one isn't?
Correct.
And so this is in the financial?
That is not governed by the town. I don't think that's governed by the town, yeah.
Okay. So this is considered governed by the town, even though it's really governed by the trust, but it's?
It is, and actually, I think 2020 was the first year we even reported on it because we were almost thinking about it like a Friends-type of trust. And then our external auditor said, no, it's really governed by the town and really needs to be reported in our financial statement.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, any other questions on the permanent funds? All right, we are moving along. Caitlin, you want to go to the next section?
Sure, the next three should be, I'm hoping relatively easy. Capital funds, well, not that it's an easy fund, it's considered one fund in our annual report, when in reality, there's probably, I don't know, 20 or 30 of them. So it's basically, we keep track of the capital projects, which if you guys know.
Can you just give us a page number? Can you give us a page number?
There's not a listing of these funds. There, it's listed in various places. You know that capital authorization chart that we've talked to a couple of times kind of lists out? But there's no listing, so if you go to page 46 of the hard copy, I apologize, I don't know the online page number.
Yep.
It kind of gives you a feel of the types of capital projects that are current. But it's only considered one fund in the annual report. So it's all rolling up into one capital fund number, which is reported in the beginning part of the annual report. I can give you a page number for that.
Yeah, so in my hard copy, the balance sheet is on page 26 of the CAFER, and the revenues and expenditures are on page 28. And then that footnote that you referred to on page 46 is not, is that all of the authorizations that currently have a sort of a sub-fund at this point?
That is pretty much a lot of our current projects that have expenditures. So again, it's kind of in various places here. You have your capital projects, like you said, in the governmental fund section, page 26, 28. We have a pretty good listing on page 46. There's also some funds that we're looking to deauthorize and reallocate, as we've kind of spoken to before. So a lot of those are rolling up through the numbers as well that you just referenced. Just to give you a feel, on our deauthorization list that hopefully kind of comes soon, we have about 17 projects. And again, the time log, I think we spoke about this, is due to the schools and their audit, and how long it takes to finally get their audit. And we kind of can't close these funds out until everything is finished. So a lot of these are what we would consider older, but in reality, we can't, we can't close them. So really, there are bond authorizations over $1 million for any type of capital project. And I can give you, like, like you could see on page 46, a lot of them are school projects. The Capital 9 recurring is lumped into one kind of big number. We also have things like the phone system and bridges and roof warranties. So you're gonna probably get a lot more detail once we come forward with the deauthorization listing. We need to track them by bond authorization for our Bond Council. Hence, every authorization is kind of tracked at a more detailed level than is reflected in our report.
Okay, questions from the board on this? All right, everyone's clear on the deauthorization and why that needs to be done and how that works? Okay. All right.
Okay, the next two, I think, are pretty self-explanatory. I really didn't prepare much for, there are two OPEB funds, which are the post-employment, other post-employment benefits for the town and the police and fire. So it's basically medical for retirees. There's two trust funds that were established in 2009 for these types of expenses, which flow through our actual trust, the trust documents. We have separate investments for our OPEB funds, which are reported right before pension, right after pension in our annual report. You guys have got the actuary reports for these trust funds as well. Page 94 of the hard copy kind of looks at the pension and the OPEB trust funds and what ran through there in fiscal '21.
Okay, any questions on those? All right.
The last two clearly are the pensions, same type of things. They're governed by the J-RIP, which account for all of the activities of both the town and police and fire retirement plan. And you can see their balances again on page 94.
Okay, doesn't look like there's any questions on those.
Oh, the last two, I'm sorry, there's two that I think, I skipped over. The two proprietary funds are the Parking Authority Funds, which again is new in the annual report for the reporting purposes. Not new, it's not new, it's just new in the book. And the Internal Service Fund, which we've talked about in terms of risk management and the medical for the active employees as well. Again, Parking Authority governs their funds in conjunction with the state, and the Internal Service Fund is clearly funded through the general fund budget process, and the expenses are flowing through, and some are medical expenses and any settlements and heightened hypertension claims.
Questions from the board on either of these? Caitlin, just, we may have talked about this, I feel like we may have asked this question at another time, but the Parking Authority, so it has fund balance in there of 1.7, but given COVID and less people at the train station and all of that, what is the, what happens to this fund if, if it, you know, how does this fund stay solvent if it doesn't continue to collect money from parking fees, given, you know, the decline in people commuting, et cetera?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I just interject as a commuter?
Yes.
Would not, I would not underestimate the parking lot, and I'm being serious. Just within the last month, I think you know I commute back and forth to Greenwich every day, and I take the train every day, the parking lot is near capacity.
Wow, okay.
So I'm not sure if that's how long it's gonna take to catch up in terms of the revenue, but I don't know, Caitlin, what you're showing, but all I know is, as a commuter, that lot is full. Well, I shouldn't say full, close to full, certainly better than it was, let's say, a month ago. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, I just know it's-
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I was just going from last time I, last few times I've seen that the parking lot there, it was either near empty or close to, you know, or just, nothing close to full. So I guess that's good, that's good to know.
It's certainly been changing, let's put it that way.
Okay.
Now they just need to add more cars onto the trains so people could actually have a seat. That's the next obstacle, so, I don't mean, I don't mean to deviate, thank you.
No, that's, that's good to know.
I have just a quick follow-up on that, if I could.
Sure.
I don't see what's going on at the main train station, and that's really good to hear. Metro is a little different, but I also know the revenue, revenue arrangement's a little different. Metro is still probably only about a third of where it was before, but the revenue arrangement's different, right? Caitlin, I'm sorry.
Fairfield Metro does not run, that runs through the state.
Yeah, you don't get anything from that, okay. That's really interesting that downtown is full and Metro is still where it is. But that's great, good for the town, thank you.
You know, Kevin, I think it depends on the day. Honestly, I think a lot of companies like mine, as an example, some people are hybrid work schedules.
Yeah.
Go in Monday, some people go in Tuesday, but for the most part-
You're seeing it full most days.
Yes, yeah, or close, close to full, yes.
That's fantastic, okay, good.
Okay, good to know, yeah, I mean, obviously, there's, there's, there's fund balance there. I just, I mean, last year, there was an operating loss, and so, of $200,000, which is why I asked the question. You know, not knowing how long things take to get back to normal, but it seems like the fund has adequate resources to stay solvent, so that's good. Any other questions on this fund? Okay, any questions on the Internal Service Fund? Okay, and I know we talked about in our budget hearings, potentially looking at policy around the Internal Service Fund, which is, you know, something the Fund Balance Committee can take up if they so choose. So we don't have to get into that, but any other questions on any of these funds? Okay, this was easy. Caitlin, Jared, do you have all the follow-ups? I have, I might have missed some. I know we were looking for, Mr. DeWitt had a request for some detail on the library. There was, we talked about the police fund policy. You know, I don't recall if there was anything else. Did any of the board members have a follow-up that they want to? Okay. All right, well, with that, sounds like we are done, if there's no questions with this item. So Caitlin and Jared, I want to thank you for walking us all through this, appreciate it.
Sure.
Thanks, Caitlin.
Okay, so with that, we can move to item five on the agenda, which is to hear, consider, and act upon the draft minutes of February 16th, 2022, February 22nd, March 10th, March 15th, March 16th, March 22nd, March 24th, and March 26th, 2022. Can I have a motion to put this item before us? Mr. Testani, seconded by Ms. Marmian. So maybe what we can do, since we have a lot of minutes here, I see that, I believe, some of our board members were not present for some of the meetings, so maybe we'll just quickly go through them. Mr. Stark, you had a question?
Oh, I was just gonna make a motion to amend, but you told me when the right time is.
Yeah, let's go through these one at a time.
Mine's really simple.
Okay, and then any motions, we will have on that particular date as we go through them. So we'll start with February 16th. Comments or questions on these minutes? Mr. Stark?
Yeah, just, in all of the minutes, could you please correct the spelling of my name to reflect the silent E at the end? I think it says S-T-A-R-K in almost all instances, and it should be S-T-A-R-K-E. No thanks to my German forebears for that, but that's all.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I see your name spelled correctly in the forepart where it's, where it says you're present at the meeting, but I didn't notice.
Yeah, it's wrong most everywhere else. That's all, that is my motion through the entire set of minutes.
Do we, let's see, do we need a motion for, vote on a clerical item like that?
I probably doubt it.
All right, maybe we'll just leave that one to crew. All right, do we have, do we have anything? Any other, any other comments on the minutes of February 16th? Okay, so I just have maybe a couple of clerical ones. So in the first, on the, on the 16th, on the item three, Town Facilities, the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 line, in the middle of the 6th line, there's a sentence that seems to be truncated. It says, "The buildings included in the report were," period. I would make a motion to just simply delete that item unless someone, as, it's not descriptive. I think it just sounds like an error. And why don't I just continue? On this one, there's also, on the second page, again, clerical. It is the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9th line down, or 8th line starts. Mr. DeWitt also commented that the was called the Town Facilities Commission. I'm not sure what that is supposed to say. I think it should say, Mr. DeWitt also commented that the Town Facilities Commission has been defunct for years. So I would suggest to just strike the words "that the was called the," so that it will read, as I said, Mr. DeWitt always also commented that the Town Facilities Commission has been defunct for years.
I seem to remember my comments to be along those lines.
Yep. And then just one other clerical error on page, four of the minutes, last paragraph, four up from the bottom. James Walsh, "Ask about the tennis court should be asked." So if we could handle those, I would make a motion to handle those four small revisions in one motion. If there's a second, Ms. Marmian? Okay, all in favor, or any other comments, questions? No? Okay, all in favor? All right, Ms. Charlton, Mr. DeWitt, Mr. Stark, Mr. Testani, Mr. Curly, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Matola, Ms. Marmian. Okay, that carries 8-0. All right, and then I would make another motion to accept the minutes with that, those amendments for February 16th, 2022. Second, Ms. Marmian, all in favor? Ms. Charlton, Mr. DeWitt, Mr. Stark, Mr. Testani, Mr. Curly, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Matola, Ms. Marmian. Okay, that carries 8-0. Thank you, everyone. All right, so let's move on to the minutes of February 22nd, 2022. Comments or questions on these minutes? Anyone? Okay, is Ms. Bossi still on?
Yeah.
Okay, so I have a question for you, Ms. Bossi. So first thing, on the first page of these minutes, again, typo, I'll make a motion to correct the typo on the second to last line item of the first page. Mr. Manqucy suggested emailing Mr. Cummings, if board members, not is board members. And then the second part on item five, which is on page two, the last sentence says, "Ms. Bossi said the Newport Academy settlement will not affect these numbers as that comes out of town contingency." Is that accurate, Ms. Bossi?
That settlement would come out of the Internal Service Fund.
Okay, that's what I thought, so I don't know if that was a misunderstanding, that you said town contingency, but I think that should be corrected.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay, so I would also motion to change the word contingency to say Internal Service Fund. So I don't have anything else, so I would make a motion to make those two corrections that I just mentioned, sir, second. Mr. Testani? Other comments? No, okay, all in favor? Ms. Charlton, Mr. DeWitt, Mr. Stark, Mr. Testani, Mr. Curly, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Matola, Ms. Marmian. Okay, and I just, I just did the, did I just do the amendment or the minutes? I think that was the amendment. All right, so I'll make another motion to accept the minutes as amended. Second, Mr. Stark, all in favor? Ms. Charlton, Mr. DeWitt, Mr. Stark, Mr. Curly, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Matola, Ms. Marmian. Mr. Testani, I can't tell if you have your hand up, do you have your hand up? Okay, thank you. All right, so these minutes are approved, 8-0. Okay, March 10th, 2022, any comments on these minutes? Okay, all right. Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 10th, 2022, sir, second. Mr. Testani, all in favor? Ms. Charlton, Mr. DeWitt, Mr. Testani, Mr. Curly, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Matola. I don't know if I counted Mr. Stark. Okay, approve. And Ms., Ms. Marmian, you abstain?
Abstain.
Abstain, okay. So these minutes are approved, 7-0-1. All right, we can move on to March 15th. Comments or questions on these minutes? All right. Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 15th, 2022. Second, Mr. DeWitt, all in favor? Ms. Charlton, Ms. Marmian, Mr. DeWitt, Mr. Stark, Mr. Curly, Mr. Testani, Mr.- Stark, Mr. Curly, Mr. Testani, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Matola. Okay, thank you, everyone. Uh, the, uh, those minutes are approved, eight zero. Uh, okay, March 16th. Okay, these list members absent, Ms., Ms. Leclair and Mr. Testani. I assume that's correct. Um, any questions on these minutes? Ms. Marmian?
Uh, yes, on page six, under WPCA, um, just correct, the first line says WCF Superintendent. I believe it should be WPCA Superintendent.
WPCA, okay. Okay, so you're making that motion?
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm making a motion to change WPCF to WPCA.
Okay, anything else on, on those? Okay.
I don't have anything else.
All right, I'll second Ms. Marmian's motion. Any other, uh, comments, questions on that motion? Okay, all in favor of that? Ms. Charlton, Ms. Marmian, Mr. DeWitt, Mr. Stark, Mr. Curly, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Matola, and I can't, oh, wait, Mr. Testani, were you? Okay, were you, you were not here at this meeting. Okay.
I was, no, Madam Chair, I'm sorry. I, I, you couldn't, I had a computer issue. I was there.
You were there.
I'm cited in the minutes.
Okay.
I'm not sure why. I, I try to be memorable whenever possible.
All right, so let me first count your vote on that last item. So the, um, so Ms. Marmian's motion, uh, carries eight zero. And Mr. Testani, do you want to make a motion to correct?
Just that I was present, yes.
Okay, so you're making a motion to change that you were, you should be listed under members present versus members absent.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't want to speak for Ms. Leclair, but I believe she was there as well.
Uh, Mr. DeWitt?
Yeah, I, I don't recall Ms. Leclair missing any of the, uh, budget meetings. In fact, I don't think any of us missed any of the budget meetings, and this is...
I missed, I missed the first one, Mr. DeWitt.
Oh, sorry, okay. I don't remember any of our clock is missing, I'll just put it that way.
Um, I don't, I don't recall Ms. Leclair missing either. Um, maybe, uh, let's see, is there a recording secretary on?
Madam Chair, I see, I do see a note from Prue in the, in the chat that says, "I'm sorry, I changed it, but the wrong minutes must have been submitted." Now, I don't know if she's referring to just me and me and Ms. Leclair, or...
To both. I, I, I did correct them.
Okay, all right.
I, I must have submitted the wrong ones, or Jen Carpenter did, I'm not sure. So I'll clear that up.
Okay, so...
Thanks, Prue.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
All right. So I'm not sure if we need, um, all right, so with that correction, I'm not sure if we need a vote on this. Mr. Matola? Did you have a comment?
Yeah, not to belabor this. So it sounds like, according to Prue, that the wrong minutes are before us tonight. Right, Prue? Is that what you just said? For March 16th?
Um, I, I just corrected the attendance. I didn't, uh, do anything else to the minutes, just the attendance.
Okay, I'm sorry. I, I misunderstood.
That's okay.
Then we just make a motion to correct the attendance. I think Mr. Testani started doing that for himself. Maybe we can add the motion for Ms. Leclair, too, to reflect that she attended the meeting.
Yes.
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
All right, is that, okay, so that's one motion. So Mr. Matola made that motion, seconded by Mr. Testani, uh, all in favor. Um, Ms. Charlton, Mr. Testani, Mr. Matola, Ms. Marmian, Mr. DeWitt, Mr. Curly, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Stark. Okay, so that amendment carries eight zero, and now, were there any other questions on these minutes? Okay, so then I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended. Um, is there a second? Mr. Curly, all in favor? Ms. Charlton, Mr. Testani, Mr. Matola, Ms. Marmian, Mr. DeWitt, Mr. Curly, Mr. Walsh. Uh, Mr. Stark, did you have your hand up? Mr. Stark, okay, so these minutes are approved, eight zero. Okay, almost there. Um, so maybe I'll just ask, um, because we, we can do these in a bunch if, um, unless anybody has questions. Does, does anyone plan to make comments on any of the minutes for March 22nd, March 24th, or, or March 26th? Okay, seeing none, then, I will make a motion, uh, to approve, uh, the minutes of March 22nd, 2022, March 24th, 2022, and March 26th, 2022. Do a second? All right, Mr. Stark?
Can I be heard on the motion?
Pardon me?
Can I be heard on the motion?
Of course.
I, I, I want to, um, I really want to thank everyone, because I think this process that we just went through approving these very detailed minutes, which we never had before, has reflected some bipartisanship. Um, I know that when Ms. Marmian introduced this concept of like, uh, you know, actually reflecting what we all said in the meeting, it, it wasn't entirely popular. And, and it's a lot of work for her, and, and the fact that we're all approving these minutes now, um, and she's done apparently a good job of reflecting the bipartisanship, uh, says a lot. And it says a lot more than what happened in our last meeting. In our last meeting, I said things that I regret terribly, and so I want to apologize to the entire board and to Mr. Walsh in particular. Um, and, and I hope that the spirit that has guided the approval of, of these minutes is what guides us through, uh, the rest of our respective terms together. Um, I, I really do feel like I left the door open last week to bipartisanship on some of the votes, and I, and I'm going to be very candid with you right now. There were votes where there was definitely a party line. And, and I, you, you, you all heard me leaving the door open to say, "Is there a reason why I should not vote with the Republican sign on it?" And, and I wasn't, I wasn't getting any feedback from you that I should. And, and I really hope that we can go beyond that, and we can, you know, discuss things in a way that puts the partisan differences aside, because, I mean, here's the partisan differences, right? It's, it's basically Democrats favor less additions to fund balances, and Republicans favor putting, you know, pushing back a little on the Board of Ed increases. That, that's about it, you know? I don't think there's really any...
I want to, yeah, thank, no, thank you. I just want to be careful not to speak on behalf of other...
Yeah, yeah. I, I, I'm trying to be as balanced as I can. And, and I'm not, and I'm, and I'm not trying to, and, and I totally get Republican pushing back on the, um, education budget, and I said that repeatedly last week. And, and I, and I just want to, um, you know, figure out where is the middle ground betwixt us all? Anyway, I'll leave it at that. And again, my, my apology follows all, especially to Mr. Walsh.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stark. Um, Ms. Marmian?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Stark. I just want to say that, um, the credit for these minutes doesn't go to me. It goes to, uh, Ms. O'Brien. She did a really nice job, um, in terms of being thorough and reflecting what was said, so I'd like to express my appreciation to her. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Marmian. Yes, thank you. Um, I'll offer my personal thanks to Prue as well. Okay, um, so with that, uh, we were about to vote on the approval of the minutes from the three dates, March 22nd, March 24th, and March 26th, unless anyone has any other comments.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Testani?
I hate to ruin this moment of bipartisanship.
Okay.
However...
However...
There's just one correction, really, that I, I just do want to clarify. I did make a, I did make a statement about my two sons going through a public school system. I did not say it was Fairfield's, which is what was reflected in the minutes.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that that is corrected in the minutes. All I said was that they were, um, examples of a public school education. That was, that was my point.
Thank you, Mr. Testani. So which minutes, which minutes are those, Mr. Testani?
On the 26th.
So on the 26th, then can you just, um, okay, so this would be at the end of your comments?
And now I can't find it, but it's there, yeah.
Okay, so I, I assume that that is on...
He says, I can read it to you. He said, he said he has two kids who went through the FPS, so if you just change it to public schools and not have the Fairfield or the F.
Okay, so Mr. Testani, is that your motion to change, to change FPS to public schools? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I will second your motion.
Thanks, Sheila. That was really some good bipartisanship right there.
I'm working on it. Thank you.
We're all working on it.
Okay, so let's vote on Mr. Testani's amendment.
It can only go up from last week, Kevin. Right, Lori?
What's that?
It could only improve.
It could only improve, Jack. I'm, I hear you. All right, let's, let's vote on your amendment from, uh, for the minutes of March 26th. Um, so all in favor of the amendment for Mr. Testani, raise your hand, Ms. Charlton, Mr. Testani, Ms. Marmian, uh, Mr. Stark, Mr. Matola, Mr. DeWitt, Mr. Curly, Mr. Walsh. Okay, um, and so hopefully I can do all three of these, uh, in one motion, but I'd like to make a motion to, uh, approve the minutes of March 22nd, March 24th, and March 26th as amended. Um, second to that motion, uh, Mr. Curly, uh, all in favor. Okay, Ms. Charlton, Mr. Testani, uh, Ms. Marmian, Mr. Stark, Mr. Matola, Mr. DeWitt, Mr. Curly, Mr. Walsh. Okay, those minutes are approved. All right, thank you, everyone. Uh, so, we will move on to item six, to hear, consider, and act upon any communications. Um, Mr., I'll start with, uh, Mr. Schmidt. Mr. Schmidt, do you have anything for the board?
Uh, no, nothing further.
Okay. Uh, any other communications? All right, seeing none, uh, we'll move on to item second, seven, and I will take a motion to adjourn. Uh, Mr. Stark, seconded by Mr. DeWitt, all in favor. Ms. Charlton, Mr. Testani, Ms. Marmian, uh, Mr. Matola, Mr. DeWitt, Mr. Curly, Mr. Walsh. Um, thank you. I just want to note for the record, it's 9:34. This might be a record for us. Thank you, everyone, and good night.
Good night.